Good evening. I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have a total of four items on the agenda. Item number one, regular meeting from April 5th, 2021, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Any questions or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number two, award contract 2111A, rebid Eisenbaum State Trail Crack Ceiling and Seal Coating, 2021. Good evening, Cindy.
Hello. Okay, we're here to get permission to award this project. It's the seal coating, crack ceiling, and then there's a patch that has to be cut out and replaced on the Eisenbaum State Trail. This is all the paved areas on the trail. The trail's never been seal coated. Last time it was crack filled was like 2000. So it's time. We got three bids. The low bid was American Pavement Solutions for $26,640. We've got in the schedule that they need to do the crack filling before school gets out, and then seal coating later in the summer after school starts again so we can close the trail the minimum amount of time to get this project done. With a 5% contingency, the total contract price would be $27,972. I checked with Kunkel Engineering, and they've, American Pavement Solutions has done work for the city before, and they've been satisfied with their work, so we feel that they're qualified to do the job. We have a grant of $25,087.55 from the recreational trails program, and that's supposed to cover half the project cost. The other part of the project that's not in this contract is for our park crews to do some shoulder work and retaining walls along the Eisenbaum State Trail. So we've got force account, labor, equipment, and materials in that part of the project that's not in part of this contract. So that's why the grant is so much bigger.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Cindy? Yes, Alderman, Delmack.
Cindy, I'm glad you mentioned the retaining wall. That was a subject of discussion on social media that there was some, I don't know, minor work done. Are you gonna, so you're going back to look at retaining walls?
Yeah, there's some areas where the shoulder's kind of sloughed away. You know how steep that trail is on the sides. So our crews will go back in with landscape timbers, stake them in, and backfill with some more shoulder material. I know that happens on a regular basis, and we've got animals burrowing under the trail and things like that, so they will be repairing that. That's part of this project. But they can't do it like until the end of the year because there's like restrictions on wildlife crossing the trail and nesting and things like that. So yeah, they'll be looking at that again.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Item number three, 18th Avenue Paradise to Vote, preliminary resolution for the levying of special assessments. Good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you. This item is to ask council if, and the Board of Public Works, if we intend to special assess for the improvements of the reconstruction of 18th Avenue between Paradise Drive and Vote Drive. The reconstruction work includes clearing and grubbing, grading, storm sewer installation, curb and gutter, sidewalk, and road and restoration. Usually when reconstruction happen and we have new improvements that were not there before, it's been the policy to assess for those improvements. For example, along this road, there's no curb and gutter, but the new curb and gutter, the cost would be assessed to the, to the properties along the road. Also, if we're going to widen the pavement, we would assess for the cost of widening the pavement up to the standard cross section. In this case, if the pavement is about 24 feet wide and we're widening to, let's say, 40 feet, we would assess for the increase in width, but only up to 36 feet because that's our standard cross section. So we don't assess for over, over width, over the standard cross section. So in that case, if we would assess for the, for the road pavement, it would be the 36 minus the 24, so it would be for the extra 12 feet that are not here today. Same thing for sidewalk, storm sewer, and this is the normal process when we reconstruct and we install new improvements that are not there at the time. We come and ask council and the Board of Public Works if there is an intent to assess the benefiting properties along the, the project for some of those improvements. So we have a resolution for you if you decide to move forward with the assessment at this time and, and to approve, to approve our request tonight.
Before we make a motion on this, I'm going to ask, is there any questions for Max? Alderman, Delmack?
Max, could you explain the, how it was decided that property owners that aren't on 18th Avenue are part of this in relation to the condominium association common area situation?
Thank you, that's a great question. So basically, we look at the properties that are abutting the project, and for the condominium property, as you said, there is a certain frontage of that property on 18th Avenue. However, that property is one property for all of the condominiums, all the units, and according to the declaration of the condominiums, that would be owned by all of the units. From what I read in the declaration, it seems the unit owners own the walls and what's inside, but as soon as they step outside, the land outside is owned in community by the entire condominium. So that is why if we're going to assess the property, we're assessing a common property, and therefore, that's why we're informing all the unit owners about this and the condo associations.
All right, okay. Alderman Berquist?
Mr. Chairman, it's been brought to my attention that official notification may not have been done to all the property owners concerned with this project. We would ask, and it's not through any wrongdoing or anything of the city, you know, the city has a procedure in making those notifications, but there may have been some issue with maybe the postal service getting the delivery of those notices and such, that I would request that maybe we table this for another time.
Second.
Okay, we have a second? Do we have a, okay? Any other questions?
We have a motion and a second. That's a motion to table, right?
Yes, yes. Alderman Berquist made the motion, and Mark Alderman Allen, second. Any other questions?
No, we have to act on the motion to table.
Yes, Alderman Kennedy.
Procedurally, I can't ask a question because there's a motion in the table, Ian.
Has to be dealt with immediately, right? Motion to table?
Yeah, I, well, it's, it's, a motion to table is to take up at later in the meeting. You're asking to postpone to a later meeting, correct?
Yes, sir, I may have.
Yeah, so that's not a motion to table, that's a motion to postpone the item to a separate meeting. Let me check, I don't have my Robert's Rules book handy.
I thought it had to be taken up at the next meeting.
Schedule it for a date certain, you can postpone it to the next meeting, or you can just postpone it to a future meeting, it depends on your motion.
Thank you, that was going to be my question to...
It is debatable, and it can go into the main question.
If you want me to come back on May 17 or at another meeting with the same item.
I would think that another two weeks would be more than sufficient to allow the postal service to make those notifications. Again, the notifications went out less than a week ago, and given the current state, I would say that there, two weeks would be sufficient time to do that, to make those notifications. So I'd like to, go ahead.
Would you like us to send another notification to all these properties tomorrow for the May 17? Because now that the meeting date has been changed, we should let them know, okay, it's, for those who are not here, it's been postponed and it's now changed to May 17. So that's what I would do. I would, if you tell me it's May 17, I'll put that date. If it's June 3 or whatever, I'll just put that date and then send the notices again.
Okay, and your office sends those notifications, correct?
Yes, yes.
Right.
I will note, there's going to be a public hearing on this at some point as well, that we have to hold by statute. This is just the preliminary step.
Correct, I understand that.
Okay.
Yes, I know, this is not mandatory step in the process, but that's something that we've been doing to inform the property owners early in the process.
Yes, it's just that this is one of the few things that I've been actually approached to from constituents that, again, they found out that the meeting was being held, that the action was being held, and they did not receive the notice that they were believed to have been given, so.
Okay, Max, if you want to agree then to set that up for May 17?
You'd need to vote on the motion.
Yep, yep, I just want to make sure that that's okay with Max.
Yeah, I'll be here on May 17 for other items anyway, so.
All right, okay, all right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Thank you, Max. Item number four, approval of, approval of long-term storm water management practices, maintenance agreement, CAT Leasing LLC. Max?
Thank you again. So this is one of our standard agreements that we have with property owners who are granted a storm water management permit from the city. So basically, when there is a new development, we look at the impact on storm water management, and there's a permitting process where the property owners will plan to install some facilities on their property to properly manage storm water in accordance with current rules and regulations. During that permitting process, we have them draft an agreement with the city describing those, those improvements and those storm water management practices, and describing how they will be maintained, how often they will be inspected, cleaned up, if the grass needs to be mowed, et cetera. This is to ensure that those facilities will function properly in the future, they will be maintained, they will be inspected, et cetera. So they enter into this agreement with the city. This is something that was implemented where the city became permitted by the DNR with what we call the MS4 permit. And so this agreement is for CAT Leasing LLC, where they're doing a building addition to their property, and we have verified that the application, their application complies with the current rules and regulations, and the agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney, and we recommend approval of this agreement.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions for Max? I do have one question, Max. On the back side, there was a storm water quality management and TMDL requirements. Can you kind of explain that, what TMDL requirements are?
So TMDL means total maximum daily load. So basically, we have some modeling done to estimate based on the new improvements, whether it's a parking lot, a building addition, new sidewalk, new impervious areas that will help sediments go to the storm sewer, to the rivers quicker than they used to be when the field, when the, the land was just grass. So there's modeling to calculate the, the poundage of sediments that would travel in storms, as well as phosphorus, and this modeling is looking at the existing condition, seeing what was the, what was the impact with no improvement, and then what is the impact with improvement? And there's an increase in, in those sediments, and so those facilities are installed to capture the sediments and to bring the level of sediment travel down to the, to a certain level that is put in the regulations. So that's what TMDL means, is total maximum daily loads. It's the loads of pollutants that travel with storm water from the property to the waters of the state.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
All right, and with that, I will call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the Finance Committee regular meeting, April 19th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any questions on that? Nope, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, next on the agenda is items for consideration, which is, up first is resolution accepting donation from Jean Schneider, and I believe Chief is here to tell us about that.
Yeah, if I can just briefly do items two and three, we received two donations. Jean Schneider sent us a check for $25, Mary Bartle for $100. When they, those donations are accepted, they get put into miscellaneous donations for the city, and we're requesting that those be re-appropriated back into the police department budget to be used on our crime prevention programming. So $25 from Jean Schneider and $100 from Mayor Bartle. I don't know if they have to be handled separately or if they...
Motion to approve.
Both at the same time?
I think we have to handle them separately.
Ian, separate or can we do them both together? Okay, we'll do them both together then if we can, all right? So we have a motion from Justice to approve. Do we have a second to approve the two donations? From Alderman Allen, great. Thank you to Mary and Jean, both for their generous donations, we appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful, that carries, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And with that, that is, there's no further business for the Finance Committee, I adjourn the meeting.
And good evening, I'll call to order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for May 3 at 6:30 PM. Note that we do have a quorum with all present and accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, and I'll note that we have 17 items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes, the Common Council regular meeting minutes of April 19.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Let's see, I'll give it one to Madeline Kennedy. Any questions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll need approval for the Common Council regular meeting minutes of April 20th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Kennedy. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, all those in favor, sit by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll kick off our presentations with the oath of office for firefighter, paramedic, James, see if I can mess, not mess this up, Heickelbeck. There we go. Take it away, Chief.
I, James Heickelbeck.
I, James Heickelbeck.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter, paramedic.
As firefighter, paramedic.
In the City of West Bend.
In the City of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
And will forth faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, James's father, Greg, pins on his badge. Introducing to James. James comes, James comes to us from the Wachshau area, he attended high school in Watertown on Luther Prep, went on to college at Wisconsin Lutheran College, served on the Lisbon Fire Department, and most recently the Nobby Falls Fire Department. We're excited to have James, he finished up his recruit training last week, got assigned to a shift, it got rocked on a shift five days. We're excited to have him, and as you can see, one of our bigger fellows. Last couple we hired were smaller fellows, we ran out of gear at that level, so we're excited to have him, somebody a lot taller than I am, so congratulations, thank you. Usually you would shake everybody's hand when it's open air, now he would take it away, thank you.
And we'll take it away with our Police Week proclamation, if we can have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, I'll give it to Allen and Kahler. All those in favor of the pro, oh, sorry, Berquist, sorry. You don't want to offend anybody. All those in favor of the proclamation, sit by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this proclamation reads, whereas Congress has designated May 15 of each year as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week surrounding it to be Police Week, this is a time to honor the memory of those officers who sacrificed their lives in service to the public, and whereas, more than ever, our nation depends upon law, local law enforcement as our first line of defense, and it is important for citizens to know and understand the duties, responsibilities, and challenges of our law enforcement officers and agencies. And whereas, we applaud our law enforcement officers for recognizing their duty to serve the people by safeguarding live, life and property, by protecting people against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, our citizens value the courage and devotion with which our law enforcement officers maintain peace and security, whereas, on Peace Officers Memorial Day and during Police Week, we express our gratitude for the selfless public servants who wear the badge and put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe, and we pay respect for those who lost their lives in the line of duty. Now therefore, I, Kristoffe Jenkins, Mayor of the great City of West Bend, do hereby recognize May 9 through 15 of 2021 as Police Week in the City of West Bend, and I encourage all citizens to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation by flying their American flag at half-staff in honor of all fallen officers. And with that approval, I will move on to our Roots and Branches Plant Sale and Adopt a Plot Days proclamation, if I can have a motion on that.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Dolnick and Kahler, all those in favor, sit by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this proclamation so reads, whereas Roots and Branches believes in growing a beautiful community today and planting seeds of pride and stewardship to improve the natural environment of West Bend tomorrow, and whereas, our community continues to be committed in preserving and improving the beauty of our neighborhoods by planting flowers, trees, shrubs within the city. And whereas, Roots and Branches will be holding its annual plant sale at the West Bend City Hall Employee Parking Lot on Friday, May 14 and Saturday, May 15, 2021. In addition, Roots and Branches will provide the flowers and other necessary materials for the Adopt a Plot program, with volunteers providing the labor necessary to plant and tend. And now therefore, I, Kristoffe Jenkins, Mayor of the great City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim May 14 and 15, 2021, as Roots and Branches Plant Sale and Adopt a Plot Days in the City of West Bend, and I encourage all citizens to support and participate in these programs, helping to make our community a beautiful place in which to live. And then last, but certainly not least, we have a proclamation for International Migratory Bird Day.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Madal. All those in favor, sit by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this proclamation so reads, whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our community, these birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, facing a growing number of threats on the migration routes and in both their summer and winter homes. And whereas, International Migratory Bird Day has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout the Americas. And whereas, International Migratory Bird Day is a day to foster appreciation for wild birds while supporting and celebrating migratory bird conservation. Now therefore, I, Kristoffe Jenkins, Mayor of the great City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 8, 2021, as International Migratory Bird Day in the City of West Bend, and I urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large. Thank you for all of those. And with that, our last presentation. We have a presentation regarding the Health Insurance Committee meeting by Michelle. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay. All right, good evening. So I'm here tonight to talk about our Health Insurance Committee. We met, over the last three months, we met five times. Our committee consisted of two aldermen here, Megan and Judd Dolnick, and then we had two from companies in the city. We had Epic Creative, Lisa Pence, and then Tim Jazorski from Richards Insurance. And then we also had representation from the city with myself and Barb Walker, our admin assistant over at TPW. So we met for over three months, five times. We talked about, we reviewed our current plan, we reviewed community, the plans in the community. We also looked at the state plan and are here to make a recommendation to the city. So after looking at it, we saw, we have, went to look at implementing the Family Savings Plan, which is with Network Health, which will allow, I guess it's innovative way to move employees and their families off the plan to go on to another employer-sponsored plan, so it helps save money for the city. But again, the ones that are, would move off would need to go to Network Health or Frederd type system. And then we looked at the state plan, but the state plan unfortunately would, due to our history and our claims, we would have a surcharge, so it actually would cost us more money, so that wasn't a viable option for us. And then we also are looking at alternative plan design. Right now, we have a high deductible with an HRA, and we're looking at options for our employees, and we're going to work with our broker to look at putting in another, like a high deductible with an HSA or something. So we're still working on what that's going to look like, but we wanted to at least, you know, put options out to our employees, that we're going to be looking at different ones. And then thank you to everyone that participated and gave their time for the committee, really appreciate the time and effort. It was great help. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or you want me to go into more detail, just a quick and go through it.
Just for some clarification, are you looking for any sort of action from the council or are you just presenting?
Nope, this is just to inform you of what we've done, where we're going with it, and what, yeah, what direction we're going in, and we're hoping, you know, so that you're on board with us too, so.
Sounds good. I'll open up, is there any questions? Alderman Dolnick?
Michelle, this was very capsulized, and I don't know that you need to go into detail at this point, but are you going to put something together for the employees that explains all of this?
Yeah, yes, we're, we've already sent, I've already sent something out to the department heads to let them know. We've actually sent out information on the Family Savings Plan, at least to department heads to give them a heads up. We're going to be starting that process early because with open enrollment, people, things get too jumbled together, so we're going to look at rolling things out like in May, June to the employees. So yes, we'll definitely be starting early and often with them so that it's not, they got to make a decision in a week and, and get it all done. So yes, definitely on the bucket to do.
Alderman?
The state plan, that was the reason that that was so expensive, because that requires everybody to be in that plan, or is, I know we have some, some people that are expen, high expense, so.
Right, right. It, it comes down to the fact that they look at, they do underwriting and look at it, and if you, you're going to, basically if you're going to cost them more money, they're going to surcharge or put extra, make you pay more premium each month. So we would be charged an extra, you know, 400
we would have to then find a plan for seven people, potentially retirees, that are going to be more expensive, so that's not a great option either.
Add that part into it, yes.
So, okay, sorry.
No, that's good. That's fine.
Thanks. Alderman Muddle.
Yeah, this is just kind of a general, general question. Being that one of our main issues in the city is employee retention, was that a factor that you guys considered?
Yes, definitely. I mean, that's part of why we're like-
Okay. And how do we measure up to the neighboring municipalities?
Um, I-
And the thing that you consider-
It's hard because that apples to apples with our plans, but I mean, I think, I think we have a good plan. I think we're a little higher on premiums for employees, like the percentage wise slightly. But I think that's why we're also looking at an option to, so that employees have the choice, choice. I think that's the big thing. Unfortunately, the plan is, the plan and, and again, we're healthy, we pay less if we're, you know, we're not healthy, we're going to pay more, so let's, let's look at our wellness and get healthy.
Okay.
I guess I would just add as a relatively young, healthy person myself, that, you know, having the option of a lower cost, cost plan for somebody in my age group, I think is a good retention too, especially when we're trying to recruit new, young blood.
Sure.
I like to see that as a benefit.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Cool. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right. And then I'll look to consent the agenda. I'll pull out item number six, and so this is just for items seven through 10.
Second.
Thank you. Kayler and Burquist. All those in favor of consenting the agenda, considering seven through 10, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we have number six, which is 18th Avenue Paradise to Vote Preliminary Resolution for Living of Special Assessments. The recommendation was to motion to postpone to May 17th.
Motion to postpone until May 17th.
Second.
Okay. Burquist and Muddle, were there any questions on that? Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we have number six, which is 18th Avenue Paradise to Vote Preliminary Resolution for Living of Special Assessments. The recommendation was to motion to postpone to May 17th.
Motion to postpone until May 17th.
Second.
Okay. Burquist and Muddle, were there any questions on that? Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. And we'll move on to agenda items for consideration. The first is number 11, a resolution in support of sufficient state aid to cover VSP fee rate reduction. We're going to have a brief synopsis of what this means by Jess Wilds, our Communication Development Director. Welcome.
Thank you. Tonight I ask for your support on behalf of the Communications Department. There's currently a conversation going on at the state level on their biennial budget, and it's to provide sufficient state aid to cover video service provider fees that were reduced in the last few years. So just some background, the Communications Department is fully funded by franchise fees, and those are collected by AT&amp;T and Charter. And in the last few years are, the percentage of fees that, so the percentage from the fees that the Communications Department and Community TV collect have been going down. And so the state has, in the last few years, passed a law that they would sort of reciprocate that loss by providing a state aid amount, a specific amount. And currently, it's showing the incorrect amount that's planned for this next biennial budget. So this request is really just to show the city's support that they make that correction moving forward in the budget so that we don't lose approximately $40,000 this year.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. And a motion from Muddle and Alan. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
And we'll move to number 12, amend section 9.075, Para 1E5 of the municipal code regarding keeping of chickens. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening.
Your favorite topic.
My favorite topic. What you have before you tonight is a draft, we annotated a proposed change to that one particular section of the code. The intent is to simply add the ability to place chicken coops and runs in a side yard, but with the restrictions that would require adequate screening and would require documentation of those changes by having an approved site plan. That site plan would be approved administratively. Those are techniques that we adopted in, for the form for sheds and garages, accessory structures, inside yards that we had done last year already. This is in response to owners' requests of people that own corner lots. Corner lots by definition, as we probably have gone through before, do not have rear yards, and as such, the ordinance that the council had approved previously only restricted chicken coops to rear yards. So this would allow those type of owners to, of corner lots, to have, and other side yard areas besides corner lots, to have chicken coops in those with the appropriate screening and a site plan approval. There's no changes to any of the other requirements, as you can see from the amended text. If this would be, meet your approval, we did provide you a ordinance that you can actually act on tonight to amend the code.
Motion to amend the municipal code as recommended.
Second.
Thank you. Alan and Muddle, open up if there's any questions. Alderman Dolnick.
I'd just like to add that this was before the Plan Commission, and Plan Commission endorsed this. Did not see that it was going to be a problem because of the safeguards on screening.
Mark, who is responsible for this, the site plans on those? Who looks at those?
Unfortunately, it's myself and our staff.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of amendments, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And moving on to number 13, a public hearing for 2020 MS4 Annual Report and Storm Water Management Program. We'll start, Max, for you to give a presentation on that. Yep, we'll start with a presentation, then we'll open up the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. This item is to give the public an opportunity to comment on our MS4 permit that the city has from the DNR. With this permit, we have to write a report every year. This started since 2006, and the current cycle for the new permit is from May of last year, 2019, through April of 2024. So this new permit, like I said, requires an opportunity for the public to provide input, and the public hearing is the form that we selected to do that, to satisfy the requirement. We have the annual report and various other documents on the engineering webpage of the city website, and the program document provide detailed information on the programs that the city has in place to satisfy the requirements or that we are going to implement during this permit term. So there are several pieces to that permit. Public education and outreach, and public improvement and participation, which is, this public hearing is part of that. We have not been able to do as much last year as in the past because of the COVID-19 pandemic. But it's not just West Bend, it's all the communities throughout Wisconsin. And then we are currently talking with Sweetwater, which is the southeastern Wisconsin Water Trust, to help us satisfy some of the newer requirements that require more, what the DNR called active participation, which is having face-to-face with the public, either at public events or, or other, other type of events where we can directly interact with the public. There's the illicit discharge detection and elimination, where the city has to inspect outfalls of storm sewer going into the waters of the state. We have to conduct inspection to major outfalls at least once during the permit term. In past permit terms, we've done it more than once. For this permit term that started last year, we haven't done it yet. So the Department of Public Works usually does this work, but starting with the new contract that we have with Concall Engineering Group, that is one of the tasks that we switch to assign to them. We also have the construction, construction site pollution control and the post-construction storm water management. We talked about the second part of this a little bit with the agreement that I presented earlier, where we need to control or manage storm water after construction is completed. There are also regulation to control storm water and erosion, ground erosion during construction, so that's what that portion covers. And the next part is municipal storm water pollution prevention. So that's more of measures that the city has put in place to minimize pollutants to reach the waters of the state, whether it be doing snow removal operation or salting of the roads, and then cleaning of catch basins, street sweeping, et cetera, over the lines of roads that the city is responsible for. And then the last one is that storm water quality management and TMDL requirements, which is a question that Alderman Buschlik asked about earlier, where we basically, for this one, we modeled the entire city, so we hired a consultant to do that, where they hire, they model every watershed in the city, and they look at every outfall that goes to any stream throughout the city, and they model to figure out what type of measures the city needs to implement or maintain in order to meet the requirements of the permit. So with that, I guess I would like to see if there's, there are any comments from the public, any questions I can answer.
Thank you, Max. I'll open it up, the public hearing. If there's anybody from the public who'd like to speak on our storm water management plan, feel free to come on up. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to end the public hearing.
Motion to end the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Alan and Muddle, all those in favor of ending the public hearings, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any questions from the council for Max? Alderman Allen.
Yeah, Max, in terms of inspecting the outfalls and so on, why wouldn't that be done either by the sewer department or, or shared with the sewer department? It would seem that they would be naturals to, to go look and see how their product is working.
So those, those inspections are not for sanitary sewer, they're only for storm sewer. So the sewer department manages all the sanitary sewer.
Okay.
And then because this is storm sewer, and our Department of Public Works is who maintains our storm sewer infrastructure, that's why they were doing it at, at some point. And now that we have Concall Engineering being able to do this, then it's part of our yearly municipal contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Max? Are you looking for any other approval then, Max, of the program itself?
I'm sorry. I didn't-
Are you looking for any other final approval beyond the public hearing?
No, I, I, it was just to have this opportunity for the public. Obviously, we're still reachable at the phone number and email address that are on the engineering page on the website. Anybody has any questions, any comments, ideas for us, please don't hesitate. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks, Max. And move on to 14, approve commercial lease between the city of West Bend and Manitou Equipment America LLC. And we'll start off with a presentation by City Administrator Jay Shembo. Take it away.
Hello, all. I'll start with the fact that Manitou reached out to us for the use of their former property. So this is the concrete pad that is south of West Bend Transit. The city owns that lot. We're currently allowing, allowing the utility contractor to use the farthest east 150 feet of that lot, so this would be for the remaining parcel. We've also offered, and it looks like not at this time, the construction of the Trails Edge Apartments, once the utility is done, if they need to use that eastern or far western edge. We've talked to the owners of Trails Edge that they might be able to stage some product there. This is, so this ask, and that's the map that I sent you over the weekend, is for the eastern edge, or two-thirds, if you will, of the remaining lot. They want to put up a fence and test drive a telehandler. Our Manitou site in West Bend is not only the corporate headquarters, but headquarters for, for the Americas of Manitou, it's also the research and development arm and engineering arm of the entire North American, again, arm of Manitou for R&amp;D, and that's in name of what they're looking to do. They, they need a concrete or a hard surface track for this test. They're testing a telehandler. Telehandler, think four wheels with an arm that extends out, and they want to drive around on the concrete, and they want to pick things up and set them down and do that over and over again. They have a test track on the northern side of their property. It's a dirt track, and that doesn't meet their needs for this. So again, they reached out, asked if we would consider leasing this piece of land to them from a business retention standpoint. I certainly think it's a wise move for the council to engage in this lease. We, we certainly want Manitou to continue to thrive and to employ lots of our citizens here in West Bend. They are the seventh highest paying taxpayer assessed value property in the, in the city, and just a good, good business partner for the city. We want them to be happy and, like I said, continue to flourish. If there's any detailed questions, I, I do know that their hours of operation for the testing, they, they have shared that it would be their normal hours. They don't employ people beyond their normal hours, so it's 7:30 to 5:00 PM is what, what their normal hours are. Ian, help draft the, the lease, if you got any specifics about that. We do have a history, 2015, we engaged in similar, two similar leases with Manitou, ironically enough, on the property right next door where the, where the hotel is now was a big concrete pad in the past, and they utilized that property.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Alan and Dolnick. I will acknowledge, I did ask administration to see if we can get some sort of financial incentive for that, this partnership, so happy to see that we'll get it reimbursed a little bit too, and happy to help them out. Awesome. Any questions? Yes, Alderman Allen.
Yeah, I assume this is not going to be loud. I know it's during the day, but it's not, it's not anticipated to be noisy or disruptive.
Just the, the noise of the machine driving around, so it's a gas engine that would be driving. I don't anticipate it to be anything that's significant, no.
All right. Any other questions? Alderman Busch, second.
Yes. Were the property owners that are abutting that property actually going to be notified that there may be some type of exercise here by them, by Gail, Manitou?
No, they have not been notified as of yet. If you guys approve this tonight, we'll notify them that we're entering into the lease.
I, I think I, I would like to see them notified so that if there's some, and at least explain to them what's happening. It's not going to be a regular six or 12 months out of the year, it's just going to be for a few months. I think it would be courtesy to the, especially to homeowners abutting that property.
We can certainly do that.
I, I tend to agree. I have concerns about the noise, but they've done similar, leased in the past on a similar piece of property and been sensitive to the neighbors, is my understanding, so, but I agree with you 100% John.
Thank you. Alderman Allen, do you have something else?
Yeah, I was going to say, we've got West Bend Transit that moves trucks in and out of there pretty much day and night, so I, I would think since we're talking a daytime-only usage, it should- So I would think since we're talking a daytime only usage, it shouldn't be a major issue. But I agree with the, the plan to notify the neighbors.
Sounds good.
Our constituents in that area have put up with a lot of transition with the hotel construction, the office complex, and now Trails Edge, not to mention the construction of Forest Avenue Utilities and then Road. Absolutely, we can, we can let them know what's going on next in their neighborhood.
Yeah. And we haven't seen a huge migration, right, from that neighborhood?
No, I don't know that we've seen any more homes for sale in there, that area than anywhere else.
Sounds good. All right. Another discussion, all those in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And move on to number 15, face covering policy for the city of West Bend. We'll start with our city administrator kind of giving us a precursor of what led to this discussion tonight.
Sure. I'll share with the council that for employees, we're currently operating under a mask policy following the CDC. So if employees are vaccinated and two or more employees are in a enclosed space and they're vaccinated, they wouldn't have to follow the mask policy. If they're not, they do. We have been operating under the state when there was a statewide ban for our constituents. That's the sign that's still on our doors. So there is no current policy for our visitors to the building. Employees, yes, but not visitors. So this is a proposed policy that would cover all of the visitors for, obviously not only this building, but all municipally owned buildings. When the department head team reviewed this proposal, there was a unanimous number, not a all encompassing number, but the majority number of, sorry, not unanimous, majority number of department heads that were in favor of this and making the recommendation to the council to encourage masked behavior out of protection for citizens that enter our building and for the employees that may be interacting with them throughout the buildings, not just in their offices.
Motion to approve.
Just a second, just a second. We do have a motion. Yep, I heard your motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Alan and Dolnick. So I'm aware this is going to be a unique conversation. I was approached from the public about speaking on the side of, we don't have a public hearing per se, but as I've done in the past, I will allow comments from the public on this item. But I would recommend you please keep your comments brief and concise, don't repeat, and remember that this is not a back and forth opportunity. This is just for you to state your comments. So I will allow that before we get into a council discussion. Go ahead. If you could please state your name and address when you come on up.
Yes. My name is Marietta Bailey. I live at 407 Jefferson Street, District 7, and I want to know, do masks really work? Where is the data and studies to prove this? Germs can go through cloth and can cling to cloth. Most people touch their mask more than they have ever touched their face because they constantly have to adjust it. They wear it under their nose or on their chin. They touch their nose and their mask constantly. Because of this, I actually feel the mask is unhealthy and creating a sense of protection that isn't there. Breathing in our own carbon dioxide is also not healthy. According to the New England Journal of Medicine, wearing a mask outside of a healthcare facility offers little, if any, protection from infections. The chance of catching COVID-19 from a passing interaction in a public space is minimal and it is unlikely you will catch it walking along in a store or on a sidewalk. In many cases, the desire for widespread masking is a reflective reaction to anxiety of the pandemic and gives a false feeling of protection. In the beginning, the WHO stated that masks should only be used by healthcare workers, caretakers, or by people who are sick with symptoms of fever and cough. The CDC and even Dr. Fauci have flip-flopped on the mask issue. In March of 2020, Dr. Fauci stated on 60 Minutes, "There is no reason to be walking around with a mask." He has actually stated, "The mask is a symbol of what you should be doing." Now he tells vaccinated people to wear two masks. It's day 422 of 15 days to slow the spread. Half the country is vaccinated, cases are down, deaths are low, survival rate is 99.8%. Washington County is open and we have herd immunity and you want people to still wear masks in city buildings? If this was still a pandemic, we wouldn't have to be reminded of it every day. The government can stop dictating my choices. They can make recommendations and protect the vulnerable and high-risk groups, but let everyone else go back to their normal lives. If you want to wear a mask, that is your choice. I will wear a mask when I feel it is necessary and I will not wear one when I feel it is not needed. This is a free country with the freedom to choose and freedom to use discretion. I am a free market, liberty-loving American and choose to live my life as normally as possible. I will take the risk and I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we hold the amount of time down? Brief comments or brief?
Yep. Thank you.
My name is Jodi Geenan. I live at 1511 Primrose Lane, West Bend, Wisconsin. I'm from District 1 and I agree with everything that Marietta said. I also know that right now we are trying to move forward with the schools and trying to figure out what, how we can get the kids back to normal. And I feel like having our city buildings go backwards and now mandate something that we weren't mandating for the public is going to make the schools kind of step backward as well. So they're doing like things like mask emotion and whatever to try to get us used to so we can maybe eventually get to the normal. Why would we want to go backwards? I know that there are at least two large churches in our city, and I'm sure there's more. I only know of the two for sure because I attend both of these churches, that do not require masking. So most people go to church and don't mask and we don't even have social distancing where it's every other pew, people pack in together, every pew or whatever. And so if the masks really worked or if they, or we were really in danger, if we weren't wearing them, I would think that by now in West Bend, we would have had some horrible new pandemic thing going on just from even these couple churches that are doing it. I know there's schools that when the mask mandate was dropped, that are private schools that some of the kids that I babysit for, they don't have to wear masks there either. And again, with all the different families coming from different areas, if this was something that was going to harm our health, we would be seeing numbers rising in West Bend. So I think-
Jodi, thank you for your comments. I just want to keep things concise and keep the ball rolling here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Oh.
Good evening. My name is Mary Wiegand. I live at 5629 Colleen Lane in the town of Trenton. We were previously in the city, but however, we do go to the library in West Bend. My husband is a contractor. He needs to go to the city to get building permits as well as, you know, anything else that we would have to do with city government. I appreciate the city and the government. I think this is where the rubber meets the road. I am an RN. When I worked in a hospital, I refused the flu vaccine under religious conviction because I won't allow toxins, poisonous toxins to be injected into my body, which is the temple of the Holy Spirit. I was given a flu exemption. I had to wear a mask one year. The next year, I didn't have to wear a mask and I asked why. And the reason was, they told me, because there's no evidence that masks do anything. This was just a couple of years ago. So no evidence that masks do anything. I don't mean to offend anyone, but you all look very foolish up there with your masks on. We are being played and I would ask that West Bend needs to rise above that. Thank you.
My name is Jamie Dutcher and I'm in District 1. We live at 1010 Mulberry Drive East, West Bend. Me, myself and my family fully support exactly what these people are saying about masks. I'll keep it very brief. I ask you to look at states that have fully opened up, no masks, no mandates, and they're doing far better than states that try to take our freedoms away and infringe on our rights. I ask you to vote no for this.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bart Williams, 2420 Skyline Drive, speaking on behalf of my family and myself. CDC has misled us for a long time. If you look on their website under Table 3, comorbidities, they acknowledge that all death certificates that list COVID at all as any contributing cause of deaths is counted as a COVID death. So instead of 550,000 deaths, we're really talking about 35,000 because there might be heart attacks, obesity, diabetes, emphysema, et cetera. If, you can really look on the website, if COVID is listed at all as a contributing factor of death, even if it's the fifth reason, they count that as a COVID death. So they've greatly exceeded and overstated the number of COVID deaths. Where else would we allow this type of inaccuracy that has had huge harms by 1,600%? I'm not kidding you, Table 3 of the comorbidities. So we've really overstated it, just as the previous woman said. What's the cause, what's the harm of all this? No big deal, right? Actually, there is. Thousands of small businesses have failed across our state. Trillions of our hard-earned tax dollars have been misallocated chasing COVID when it's been way overstated. National debt has skyrocketed. Domestic violence has increased. Suicide deaths have soared. Kids have lost a year of schooling, et cetera, et cetera. And just to give you one good example of how crazy this has gone, high school wrestlers are required to mask during matches. Now I know about that because I was a high school wrestler. Those three two-minute falls that you face as, during your match, are the most intense six minutes of your life. It is total exertion trying to beat the other guy. So when we're doing this, we're just continuing on with this craziness. Look, if people want to mask in our public buildings, that's fine, they can mask. We're asking you not to mandate this for everyone. We've dropped a lot of this. The Supreme Court ruled against it. Let's keep moving in the direction of a freedom and liberty and making this a choice, not a mandate. Thank you.
And if we can hold the applause, please. Any other comments?
Bernie Newman, 1504 Meridian Avenue. With COVID numbers improving, the vaccine out there, I'm just not sure why the city is choosing to get more restrictive. If you want to wear a mask, you can wear a mask, get the shot if you want, but why get more restrictive on the public? I just urge to vote no on this.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rob Schaefer. Obviously, I'm a battalion chief with the city of West Bend Fire Department. I'm also the medical examiner in Washington County in 2014. I'm the lead investigator and the department head of the medical examiner's office as well. I'm not speaking so much on behalf of the fire department or on the county or any of my official capacities, but I am speaking on behalf of myself as a person with a degree in physiology, as a person with a degree, a master's in public health. Getting your master's in public health from a tier-one research institution during a pandemic is both very convenient and very eye-opening. When we talk about mandates, really health mandates are there to protect those in the highest-risk categories from those who feel that they are not at risk. COVID-19 is caused by a virus. That virus is transmitted through the air. There is no denying that scientific fact. There is no denying the fact that any barrier will shield you from anything coming at you. X-rays are shielded by a barrier. Specific x-rays are shielded by a piece of paper. Is it 100%? Absolutely not. Does it still work? Sure, to some degree. The mixed arguments that we want to make regarding COVID-19 is not so much what protections we take, but how effective they are in what population. The gentleman who points out Table 3, that COVID-19 is mixed with many comorbidities, absolutely it is. Those people are just as dead. I've watched a number of death certificates being signed out by individuals with no medical training and it is true, some of the death certificates are overstated, but that has nothing to do with COVID-19. It has everything to do with the system of death investigation and the education of the people signing the death certificates. What we need to do with COVID-19 is refocus on what it is. It's a pathogen. It is a virus. We don't need to argue how good masks work or why masks don't work or that we're protected through our religious convictions. What we know is in places with vaccines, people who are vaccinated are much less likely to get COVID-19. Is it 100% guarantee? Absolutely not. But it's better than nothing. Everything you can do in building your defenses against any virus is one extra way to protect yourself and to protect those who truly need the protection. I don't need the COVID-19 vaccine for me. I'm 52 years old. I have absolutely no comorbidities. I have the COVID-19 vaccine in me to protect my family and to protect every patient that I see who has those comorbidities. So if we want to talk about what the vaccine is for, what the masks are for, and who we're working for in the COVID-19 pandemic, we should embrace a religious ideal and we should go ahead and love our neighbors like we love ourselves and want to protect them more than we want to protect ourselves, want to protect them more than we're interested in our own personal civil liberties. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Hi, my name is Valerie Brussett and I live at 2465 Country Creek Circle here in West Bend, District 6. I'm also an RN and I can tell you that the masks that people are wearing, the paper masks, the cloth masks, won't do any good in protecting people. If you're going to wear an N95, that's something else and those are the things that we wear in healthcare, but the flannel, cotton, cloth, paper masks do not do anything to protect you or your neighbor. So I'm asking that you vote no on this mandate. Thank you.
And again, I'll ask that we hold the applause. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak? Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I really appreciate it. I will turn it over to the council then, if they have any comments, questions, suggestions from there. Alderman Kayler and then Dolnick.
First of all, I got a question on the policy that got written here. It says a face covering, where was it? No. Until case's status is low. What's, when is case status and risk low? What's the determining factor? It says until the risk and case status is low. I think we are low. So hence, why are we doing this and why are we doing it now? I, I don't get it. And if we go by constituents, out of all the years I've been on council, this is one of the largest meetings we've had in attendance and not a single person spoke in favor of this mandate.
All right, Jake and-
If you don't want to be here, don't be here because I'm sick of your snide remarks.
All right. Alderman Kayler.
Snide remarks. I'm done with you. If you don't want to be here, don't come.
Alderman Kayler. Thank you. Jay, I'll let you answer that question.
So there's a weekly report that comes out from the Washington Ozaki Health Department and in that weekly report, it lists high, moderately high, very high, and it's been consistently high the last few weeks. It has not been low, but, so that would be the trigger when it goes to low.
Thank you. And Alderman Dolnick? Yep.
I take my advice from my doctor. We got supposedly RNs in here who are saying these things. You cannot go into the Freiter Clinic without a mask. You cannot go into the Aurora Clinics without a mask. You cannot go into the hospital without a mask. I don't, and I'm not going to take my advice from the internet. I'm not going to take my advice from the county health department because they've been completely co-opted by the county executive. I'm not even going to take my advice from the CDC at this point. I'll take my advice from the doctors. And the doctors in the clinics in this city and the hospital in this county are insisting on masks in their buildings. Now, if that doesn't mean something to people, then that's their problem. But I take my advice from someone who has an MD next to their name. Thank you.
Anybody from this side?
You were first.
Go ahead, Megan.
Sure. Okay, I just wanted to say, I looked at some data today because I do data analysis for a living. The cases being low, my biggest concern is from the website, I see case low is defined as zero to one cases per 100,000 or something on average.
And from this side?
You were first.
Go ahead, Megan.
Sure. Okay, I just wanted to say I looked at some data today because I do data analysis for a living. The cases being low, my biggest concern is, from the website, I see case low is defined as zero to one cases per 100,000 or something on average. So that's, that's gonna be a very low, low rate. Right now, today, the ruling total for us, so zero to one is considered low. One to 10 is medium. 10 to 25 is high. 25 to 75, critical. 75 plus is extreme. Washington County is ranked at 12.5. So we are a little over the medium because 10 would be the high end of medium. Test positive rate in Washington County per the COVID website is 5.5% of tests come back positive for COVID in Washington County. So is that super high to me? Not necessarily. I looked at also, 79% of our people over 65 are vaccinated. I feel really good about that, that our vulnerable populations are out there getting their vaccination. The vaccination is open to everybody over the age of 16 right now. The clinics are open. I know Ozaki Washington County held a clinic at the fairgrounds, open to the public. Anybody can walk in, get their vaccination, get on the trail to get it. And actually, 40% of Washington County residents are on the trail to get it right now. So we're headed in a direction of that. Our ICU beds right now in Washington County are at 13%. It's been at that rate. I'm sorry, the ICU capacity used is about 13%. So it's been at that rate since October of 2020, according to the graphs that I've seen on the CDC website. So we're not at a critical load on our hospital right now. And our infection rate is just at .92, which is considered medium by the CDC, meaning when one person has COVID, the likelihood of transferring it to another person is .92%, so less than one person to one person giving it away, which is, is a good sign, too. We're going to people getting less infected, if you will. So with that, also, we have plate glass at almost every one of our city county or city building areas. The clerk's office has glass between it. The finance has glass between it. Public Works has glass between it. Parks and Rec has glass between it. So the fact that a public person without a mask is going to interact unfettered to the average city employee, I feel good about knowing that there is a barrier, and that was paid for with COVID grants, actually, that we received to try to help make sure that our city staff stays safe. So knowing all those things, I today will be voting no on the face covering, ruling, mask mandate.
Alderman.
Yeah, like, like Alderman Dolnick, I take my advice from medical professionals, and they are just about 100% in favor of masking. Masks prevent you spreading a disease to someone else, not-- they don't protect me. When I wear a mask, it's because I, I respect your, your ability to stay healthy. So I will be voting to put in place the face covering policy for city buildings.
Thanks, Mark. Any other comments? And this side. Go with Model, and then Aaron's.
I'm not even sure what to say here. I'm just really torn because I, I, I appreciate and understand, and in general, I would go with what the gentleman came up to the podium and said because he's obviously well-educated, and we've got some medical experts that are telling us that we still have an issue. However, I am District Seven Alderman, and as my compatriot here has reminded me, I do live in a very conservative district, and I just don't want my friends at City Hall to feel disrespected if I don't vote for this, for this particular bill. So I, again, I'm torn. But the only constituents I've heard from don't want this. So I guess I've gotta go with that, and I apologize.
Alderman Aaron's.
I, too, have heard from my constituents. My phone rang off the hook today, and not one was in favor of the masks. The, the other thing that I guess I wanted to point out, I'm constantly touching my mask, so I agree with the gal who said that earlier. The employees here are protected behind glass or some kind of plexiglass when people come in. I have a hard time hearing people with, with the masks on. I also love to see people's facial expressions, and I'm missing that. Curious to know, you said that you talked to department heads. Did you talk to regular employees? Or was it just the department heads that chimed in?
I shared that we discussed it at a department head meeting, and the majority of the department head team was in favor of enacting, bringing the policy to be enacted. They represent all of the employees, obviously have had conversations with employees as well. But we didn't do any kind of formal survey of employee-wide within our organization. No.
Thank you.
And here comes the questions. All right, so the current motion on the floor is for approval of the policy as presented, and we do have a second. So Steph, if you don't mind, if we could do a roll call vote.
Alderman Butchlick?
No.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Alderman Burquist?
No.
Alderman Kayler?
No.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Aaron's?
No.
Alderman Model?
No.
Alderman Kennedy?
No.
Motion fails.
And while I appreciate, I appreciate your enthusiasm, I'll just say thank you for being out. You know, as Alderman Kayler said, it's not very often that we get to see people actually at our meetings, and you sat through a lot of maybe not exciting stuff in order to be here. So thank you for coming out. And Jay, just because I asked you this question earlier, so because this policy has failed, so that means it's just gonna be as we've been doing as far as the last couple of weeks since the state mandate has lifted, correct? And it's, there's no further policy?
There would be no policy requiring masks for visitors to the employee.
Okay.
Visitors to the building, the employees will still be covered.
And you don't need a policy that is the reverse of that either? It's--
No, there just will be no, unless you have a different opinion, Ian, but there just would be no policy in place to require them. It's just you can choose to wear a mask or choose not to.
Okay. Alderman Model, do you have a quick question?
No.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Then with that, we'll move on to reports. Number 16, a report by Alderman Burquist regarding the library board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last meeting at the library board was held on Tuesday, April 20th. That's right, April 20th. You guys remember that date, right? We were right here in this building and these chairs. That day, we were here for the organizational meeting, which I'd made arrangements to be excused from the library board meeting, but the fact that we were done at 6:10, I decided to attend the meeting anyways. So here's my report. After completing the business at a board, we opened the meeting to public comments.
Chirp chirp.
I was done on purpose, okay? Of course, you're right. There was no comment, so. Next, we added a new item to the agenda labeled trustee education. Board President Deb Bartikowski introduced this agenda item to provide the board members library-related topics to educate us on. This month's topic was actually a homework assignment. We were tasked to read parts of Chapter 43 of Wisconsin State statutes pertaining to libraries. This included the definition of municipal libraries, the composition of the library board, and the powers and the duties of the board. We were to review that information and then be prepared to discuss it at our next meeting. Next was the library director's report. Steve Theory gave us updates on the monthly statistics, which included circulation, or which indicated circulations were moving upward. He provided us with information on the library subscribing to Zoom. They don't currently have a subscription, and talked about the possibility of connecting with other libraries by joining with the state to lower costs. He closed his report by explaining that staff reports would be included in information provided to the library board. He was asked if there would be any possibility that these posts or posts of the reports could be added to the Facebook post so that the public could have access to them, and he said he would look into that. The board president did not give a formal report, but added information throughout the meeting. There was also no old business to discuss. New business included a description of the people counter device used by the library and how it can be upgraded in a post-pandemic environment to meet future needs, especially including additional traffic due to the recreation center in the basement.